Good evening. Welcome to East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 4th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by East Hampton Media and Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their YouTube channel. All councilor participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the executive order by Governor Baker extended July 15th, which allowed us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain muted until recognized by the president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you're participating in poll speak time of public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham. Here. Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Russ.
Russ.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zera.
Present.
Please stand up for the place of the leaders. (Inaudible) So tonight's meeting is we invite the with the people. First, I want to say a few words before we present certificates for them. Like a lot of people know, I used to coach high school softball. And being champs is really hard, right? We tried to be champs every year. The only thing that we can achieve was being league champs for five years in a row. So that was a league champs, no national champs, all state champs. So you have been state champs five times. That's unbelievable. That's great. First, I want to say thank you for representing East Hampton and putting East Hampton on the map. And thank you for going to Washington and putting East Hampton in the nationwide. We like you guys. We admire you guys. You guys are so smart. And one day, I want to see those faces right here. Okay? So I'm gonna be in front. We have, we invite state rep Dan Carey. We have the Senator John Velez here. They have something for you guys too. And me and the Vice President Salem Derby, we're gonna be in front. I give it to you some stuff that we have for you guys.
Can I put this right here? Sure. Yes.
We'll get it straight. Don't worry. First of all, just thank you to the city council for the invitation. It's, I've sat a lot of meetings in this room. I always love coming back. And it's so fitting that we're here to celebrate you guys because you are amazing. You stumped me in the senate when we came in chatting with you beforehand. And we're proud at the State House to tell all our colleagues in the legislature that you were representing the state of Massachusetts down in Washington DC. So to come in 11th nationwide is amazing. Congratulations. Great job.
I had the honor, what was it, two, month and a half ago, two months ago, to go in and participate and be a judge and talk to you a little bit and have conversations. I don't think I've been that impressed with anybody, to be honest with you. Just fascinating. The depth of knowledge, how you communicated, the, just so, I mean, you have, every single person here knows more about constitutional law than most law students. I guess I'll put it that way. And it was absolutely amazing. You were citing case law. And I was just so impressed. It was so really, really cool. And then to go back just the other day, prior to you folks going, to judge again, and to even see that in a month and a half, you know, that much more prepared, I mean, I, whatever you are all going, it's gonna be something beautiful to follow and watch. We're here to say congratulations. What an accomplishment. And I can't wait to come back to class again and really engage in some issues and have it back. I think they're gonna sell me every single time. But, but thank you so much for including me and Kelly, just, just being the teacher and everybody involved. It was just sort of fascinating. You're doing something right. It's just fascinating. So, just an honor to be here with everybody and just congratulations. Make us all so, so, so very proud and whatever you're doing, keep on doing it. So, just an honor to be here.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. (Applause) And I just want to outfulfill guys. If I mispronounce your last name, I'm so sorry. All right? So let's start with Jack. Director Timmy.
Okay. Okay.
Joey, congratulations. Before I give you this, I'm gonna read yours so everybody knows what they say. And I'm not gonna read everybody else's, I'm sorry, but we'll be here all night long. So this is from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Jack. You like to have your own name over the jacks. To the class in recognition of placing first in the Massachusetts With the People competition, given this fourth day of May 2022. Signed by Speaker of the House Ron Mariano and myself, Dan Carey. So congratulations. (Applause) You can't run away from your system.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the state senate, official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts senate hereby extends its congratulations to Jack in recognition of winning the Massachusetts state champion for With the People, citizen in the Constitution academic competition. And be it further known that the Massachusetts senate extends its best wishes for continued success and that this citation be duly signed by the president of the senate and attested to when a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the senate, signed by president of the senate Karen Spilka, attested to by clerk of the senate Michael Hurley, and offered by me, John Velez. Congratulations.
Maria Belteki.
Okay, because first, if they read it for him, now we're gonna read it for you.
All right. So Maria. For your participation as a member of the East Hampton High School With the People Constitutional History Team, which won the state championship and placed 11th out of 47 teams at the national championships held in Washington DC from April 23rd to 26th, 2022. Signed, Omar and myself.
Congratulations. (Applause)
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Great job. Is this for you? Zach Cludier.
Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. (Applause)
Amelia Fjord Alice. (Applause) What's your good name?
(Inaudible).
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Let's see. Great job. (Applause) Jonathan Gallagher. (Applause) Emma Ginter. (Applause) Michael Amorillo Massa. (Applause) Congratulations. Thank you. (Applause) I heard him, Lynn. (Applause) Ethan Barwood. (Applause) Mateo Navarro. (Applause) Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Zoe O'Neil Carthy. (Applause) Congratulations. (Applause) Aiber Posom. (Applause) Congratulations. (Applause) Touk Tin Sherpa. (Applause) Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Sargent. (Applause) Congratulations. Thank you. (Applause) Now, we're gonna honor the student mentors. James Aquino. (Applause) And teachers. (Applause) And now, the teachers. Molly Cooks. (Applause)
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And Kelly Brown. (Applause) Thank you. Thank you. Hey, thanks, everyone. It's hard earned. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks. (Applause) We do a picture? Okay, quick picture. We know this routine, guys. Right? Tall, the back.
Stand up, Thomas.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible). (Inaudible).
Three, two, one. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. (Applause) Enough. Enough procedure. Yeah, right. Yeah.
So, we have the approval of the minutes. We have April 6th and April 20th. I will take a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Second.
We have motion on the second to approve the minutes, April 6th and April 20th. Any further discussion?
Hi.
Councillor Rothschild.
Well, I was reading carefully the April 20th minutes because I wasn't here. And I, and I understand that councillor Derby wasn't here, but it said that he made the motion to open a public hearing. Okay. So I was just, I ran it more closely because I wasn't here. So that's it. I will fix that.
Any further discussion? Sinan, Barbara.
Connie Denham. Hi. Salem Derby.
Upstate.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Same.
Owen Zera.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now is the time for poll speak time. Is anyone here that want to say something to the council that is not part of the agenda or is not at the poll hearing? We're gonna allow you to participate at the poll hearing. Now the time to talk. Please address your comment to the council and you have three minutes to talk. I'm gonna start first with who are here. If anyone from here that want to talk to the council?
Yes.
Just go to the podium and you, can you please say your name and address for the record?
Yeah. My name is Jeff Friedman. My office is 9 Chapman Ave.
Wicked.
Oh, you should see the Massachusetts senate.
Okay. Oh, that's amazing. The phone is on. (Inaudible). Excuse me. Roy's microphone was on. (Inaudible). Speaker. (Inaudible). Not to go out of the news.
JR Louise Jacob.
Not letting you stop it.
Jane Francis, Kay Collins, and Carolyn Pushing, and myself. And.
He was there?
Yeah. What she's saying is this. As white residents of East Hampton, we continue to be troubled by what Mayor LaChapelle recently said to a student at East Hampton High School during a send-off event for the school's With the People team for the competition in Washington DC. Given the ongoing incidents of racism at the high school, discussions of bias in city council meetings, and the need for facilitators, mediators, and the Department of Justice Community Relations Service intervention, no one should have to hear from any white person, let alone their mayor, that they are different and quote, "Don't talk like a white person." We have seen BIPOC people in our community try to share their experiences with the city over the years. It seems that they truly have not been heard. While it may look like the mayor hiring a consulting firm to provide workshops on racism for city officials was a step in the right direction, that clearly has not worked. Mayor LaChapelle could do more to understand why her words were hurtful and disrespectful. For example, she could start by providing funds for a public forum to learn from local, that's local, BIPOC activists and educators about the need to struggle against bias in East Hampton. She should compensate them for sharing their experiences. Incidents like this, let's be honest, happen every day in East Hampton and just don't usually get news coverage. Sometimes, an apology is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from here?
Fran Root, Hendrick Street, East Hampton. Sorry, they left. Tonight, I'm not prepared, okay? It was many years ago that I was prepared. I present, I think I'm the first person that ever stood up here and presented you with a citizens petition. All right? It was regarding zoning down in the southern part of town. Lot B and corner Kingsbury. I won't get into that. Another quick history lesson is, East Hampton had a visioning program, I guess you'll call it, I don't know, 30 years ago, maybe 20 years ago? And I was part of that. And when it was done, the director asked if we had any comments? And I, yeah, I've got a comment. I hope someday I'll go to a city council meeting and somebody's gonna stand up here during citizens speak time and they're gonna spout off about something. And it's gonna be somebody, I don't care what it is they spout off about, but it'll be somebody other than me. Because at that time, I was the only one that ever got up here to talk to you about something. Now, what I want to talk to you about is short and sweet. I'm not gonna talk to you about my son's cancer. That's gone. Okay? I've talked to you about my son in the past. He's a man with special needs. He's 50 years old. Had a 50th birthday party for him during this COVID baloney, okay? So, he's had no socialization, basically, during this past two years. But Alan's okay. No, no cancer. You and I have got a little cancer going, okay? Yeah, mine's inside of me and I'll whip it. Yours, evidently, is harder to deal with, okay? Because if you're gonna call an old white man that lives in town, been living here for 80, almost 81 years, if you're gonna call me racist, if you're gonna call me misogynistic, I'm gonna be ticked off. I'm gonna be royally ticked off. And if you have to use vulgar language in front of these kids to get your idea across, I think you're a failure. I don't care who you are, all right? And that's why I'm up here tonight, okay? The cancer has gotta be cured by the council getting involved. My two minutes must be up. I'll be back.
You have 30 more seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have 30 more seconds.
30 more seconds.
Yes. So he's not up.
All right. I watch too much TV. I know that. I hate Zoom. I'm very poor using this phone. As I was sitting here, I saw Tom Brady. Tom Brady set to become first quarterback in NFL history to start a game in four different countries. Well, I'm starting a speech up here in four different decades. Okay? So, me and Tom, we got a lot. And that's about all we got to share together.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from here? No. I'm going to the people who are in Google Meet. Marie Page.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's really loud today.
Okay. It didn't work last time. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Marie Forneyer Page. I live at 43 Parsons Street, and I was born and raised here in East Hampton and attended public schools here as well. I'm the treasurer of the Friends of the East Hampton Dog Park Committee, and I rise to speak in favor of a park in our city.
If, if you're familiar with the new city area where I live, you're aware that yard
space is at a minimum. Living above a commercial property, I have none at all for my rescue dog. And it's unfortunate that I must drive anywhere from 10 to 30 minutes to support another city's dog park. My prior rescue was fear aggressive, turning me into somewhat of an introvert, as walking him was forever a challenge. I was well aware that he was not dog park material. My new rescue Foxy came to town a year ago from Texas and loves being with dogs and people. Since she came, I have reaped the benefits of making friends with neighbors I've lived near for over a decade. I have enjoyed meeting other city residents and their dogs and have received nothing but enthusiastic responses to the idea of working to create a dog park right here for our four-legged family members. Foxy and I have something in common. We're both roommates and both seniors who require exercise to stay physically healthy and socialization to stay mentally healthy. I'm earnestly asking for your support, involvement, and encouragement in a dog park endeavor. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. You won?
Thank you very much. I'm Joan Kurtz. I live at 359 Main Street in East Hampton, and I am the president of the Friends of the East Hampton Dog Park. I am here today to read a letter from one of our supporters who was unable to attend. So this is her letter. My name is Camilla Webb. I live at 16 Fairfield Avenue. I have been a lifelong resident of East Hampton. I own a house, I pay taxes, I vote, and I support a dog park. We have a need for a dog park in East Hampton. There are many dog owners in town. While I realize not all dogs and owners have a use for a dog park, there are many who do. Just as not all parents send their kids to our schools, many do. Our tax money contributes to the schools, to the parks, and to the playgrounds. Parents have several playgrounds in town to gather where they can let their children play and parents can socialize. We dog owners would like the same opportunity. An outdoor fenced-in space for our dogs to run, sniff, and explore while we dog owners walk, sit, and socialize. It would be a benefit for many who live in small spaces or lack yards for their dogs. A well-exercised dog is a happy dog, one who doesn't bark at the neighbors. It is a shame that East Hampton residents have to go to neighboring towns to see other dog parks. So many communities around us have installed dog parks for their residents, and thankfully, they let us use them as well. We have access to grant money to help fund this. There's a growing number of people involved in the planning. We just need more support from the city to get this project going. There is land available. We have reviewed several parcels and have been diligent in selecting an appropriate area. Please support a dog park in East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I say goodbye, just to remind the council, you received an email with our invitation to join us at our first fundraiser, Bark for the Park, on May 21st between 10 and noon in the Union Plaza. I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lily?
Greetings, everybody. My name is Lily Lombard. I'm joining you from neighboring East, North Hampton, where I have served for five years as the chair of the Tree Committee there. And now, I'm a UMass Arbor Culture student. And I had the pleasure of working this past month with your wonderful tree warden, Sarah Greenleaf, and your Department of Public Works Director on a project to, for the first time, take an inventory of the street trees of East Hampton. And it was a really illuminating project, and it feels like it's building some really important momentum toward this city taking, for the first time in a generation, a renewed care in its urban tree canopy. So I know that as part of today's city council meeting, you will be proclaiming Arbor Day, maybe even for the first time, which gives me a great sense of satisfaction. And, and I also know that this Saturday, the city of East Hampton is gonna be distributing free tree seedlings to residents Saturday morning at 9:00 AM at the municipal building parking lot, and that folks will be able to choose from three types of trees, white oaks, genko's, and Washington hawthorns, which are beautiful native flowering tree. And I just love to see what you all are doing, and I'm proud to support in any way I can. So, thank you in advance for proclaiming Arbor Day in East Hampton, and thank you for appointing Sarah Greenleaf, whose name couldn't be more fitting, as your tree warden. She is a real gem, and she can bring a lot of expertise and energy to this city.
Thank you, Lily. Wally?
Good evening, everybody. This is Wally Rappelis, and I live on 1 Southampton Street here in East Hampton. And the, the issue is a fall that I had back on June 1st. It's gonna be two years in another month or so since I had the fall, and three, three of my teeth are broken. But anyways, I have, there are, excuse me, the, I was working, I've been speaking with the, the people that handle the, the insurance for the city. Sedgwick servicing Argonaut Insurance Company with myself as the claimant with the, with the claim number. And the, the issue I, the issue that I'm having is who is responsible? and socialization to stay mentally healthy. I'm earnestly asking for your support, involvement, and encouragement in a dog park endeavor. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. You won?
Thank you very much. I'm Joan Kurtz. I live at 359 Main Street in East Hampton, and I am the president of the Friends of the East Hampton Dog Park. I am here today to read a letter from one of our supporters who was unable to attend. So this is her letter. My name is Camilla Webb. I live at 16 Fairfield Avenue. I have been a long, lifelong resident of East Hampton. I own a house, I pay taxes, I vote, and I support a dog park. We have a need for a dog park in East Hampton. There are many dog owners in town. While I realize not all dogs and owners have a use for a dog park, there are many who do. Just as not all parents send their kids to our schools, many do. Our tax money contributes to the schools, to the parks, and to the playgrounds. Parents have several playgrounds in town together where they can let their children play and parents can socialize. We, dog owners, would like the same opportunity. An outdoor fenced-in space for our dogs to run, sniff, and explore while we, dog owners, walk, sit, and socialize. It would be a benefit for many who live in small spaces or lack yards for their dogs. A well-exercised dog is a happy dog, one who doesn't bark at the neighbors. It is a shame that East Hampton residents have to go to neighboring towns to see other dog parks. So many communities around us have installed dog parks for their residents, and thankfully, they let us use them as well. We have access to grant money to help fund this. There's a growing number of people involved in the planning. We just need more support from the city to get this project going. There is land available. We have reviewed several parcels and have been diligent in selecting an appropriate area. Please support a dog park in East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I say goodbye, just to remind the council, you received an email with our invitation to join us at our first fundraiser, Bark for the Park, on May 21st between 10:00 and noon in the Union Plaza. I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lilly?
Greetings, everybody. My name is Lilly Lombard. I'm joining you from neighboring East, uh, Northampton, where I have served for five years as the chair of the tree committee there. And now I'm a UMass Arbor Culture student. And I had the pleasure of working this past month with your wonderful tree warden, Sarah Greenleaf, and your Department of Public Works Director on a project to, for the first time, take an inventory of the street trees of, of East Hampton. And it was a really illuminating project, and it feels like it's building some really important momentum toward this city taking, for the first time in a generation, a renewed care in, um, in its, its urban tree canopy. So I know that as part of today's city council meeting, you will be proclaiming Arbor Day, maybe even for the first time, which gives me a great sense of satisfaction. And, and I also know that this Saturday, the city of East Hampton is going to be distributing free tree seedlings to residents Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. at the municipal building parking lot and that folks will be able to choose from three types of trees, white oaks, genkos, and Washington hawthorns, which are beautiful native flowering tree. And I just love to see what you all are doing, and I'm proud to support in any way I can. So, um, thank you in advance for proclaiming Arbor Day in East Hampton. And thank you for appointing Sarah Greenleaf, whose name couldn't be more fitting, um, as your tree warden. She is a real gem, and she can bring a lot of expertise and energy to this city.
Thank you, Lilly. Wally?
Good evening, everybody. This is Wally Rappelis, and I live on 1 Southampton Street here in East Hampton. And the, um, the issue is a fall that I had back on June 1st. It's going to be two years in another month or so since I had the fall, and three, three of my teeth are broken. But anyways, I have, um, there are, uh, uh, excuse me. The, uh, I was working, um, I've been speaking with, uh, the, um, the people that handle, um, the, um, the insurance for the city. Um, Sedgwick servicing, Argonaut Insurance Company, with myself as the claimant, with the, with the claim number. And the, uh, the issue I, um, the, the issue that I'm having is, um, who is responsible? I want to, um, the, uh, oh, boy. The issue, uh, is the finding from the, um, from the insurance company that made an assessment as to who was at fault. And I'm contesting it, uh, that, um, uh, it was determined, and this is by, uh, the insur, the insur, the server, the servicer of the insurance company, that the city of East Hampton had no prior notice of the problems in the area in question. I highlighted it and I, uh, and I sent it to, um, the, um, to, uh, to Sedgwick. The issue that I'm having is that...
Wally, I'm going to give you 20 more seconds, okay?
Yep.
I think we should explore...
I should have re, I should have rehearsed this.
Wally, can you, uh, call the mayor's office or call me and have this conversation through, uh, through the week? Or you, you, you're always welcome to come to the, to the next meeting. We have to continue with the agenda.
Yeah, I know, you have a, you have an agenda to keep to, uh...
Can you please, um, just give us a call and, uh, we will talk to you?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see none. Um, I will take a motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Uh, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm filling in for Councilor Restus, Finance Chair. Never done this before, so bear with me. We have, uh, what, uh, six appropriations before us tonight, uh, but four of them are kind of all lumped together. So let's do the other two first. The first request is, uh, $6,935.21 being transferred from free cash to, uh, elections and registration. This would be used, um, for, to purchase, uh, five additional poll pads and printers to supplement, uh, the ones that we already have. Barb, do you want to speak to this at all, or?
Sure. I say it right from here. Okay, so right now, we have, uh, five poll pads and printers, one each for the five precincts. We use them for voter check-in rather than having paperless. It's proved to be really helpful, especially when, um, early voting, when the voters' list can change, uh, you know, every single day. The list is really up to date right at the minute. It's going to also be really helpful in September and November when all the people who've had precinct changes are confused about where they vote. Poll pad will only let the people who are in the proper precinct be checked in at that precinct. I think that the reason I'm asking for this is because only having one poll pad per precinct, um, you know, can cause all the pressure to be on one person when they're checking in. It can cause lines if the person maybe is not as, you know, not as quick on it. Having two poll pads would be like two people checking in like we always used to do with the two lists. It also means that if anything was ever happened, one of them, we would have the backup. So I, I just felt like it would be good for the workers and the voters, make the lines go quicker, and I just think the poll pads are...
Thank you, Barbara. Any, councilor, have any question? Forget about this one. Anyone from the public have any question or comment about this appropriation? Seeing none, Councilor Peak?
Sure, and I'll just say that this, along with the other appropriations that are being brought forward tonight, was voted on unanimously, three to zero, in favor, uh, by the Finance Committee at our last meeting a week ago. So, I've never done one of these before. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $6,935.21 to be transferred from free cash, $6,935.21 to be transferred to election and registration, $6,935.21. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, for the purchase of five additional poll pads and printers to supplement the existing equipment, which is used for voter check-in at the polling places. This purchase will provide for a total of 10 poll pads and printers, uh, two for each of the five voting precincts. The total cost is $7,625. The balance of purchase price to be paid from the remaining FY21 extended polling hours funding, which is $689.79. I make this request in the form of a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $6,935.21 for five additional poll pads and printer for the use of the election polling places. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so the next item that we have before us is, uh, a request for $25,000 to cover salary costs in the treasurer's position. There has been a bit of movement in that position, both in terms of who's working there and in terms of, uh, the hours worked. Uh, and it's just led to, uh, the salary expenses being a bit over what was budgeted, uh, last year. So I don't know, Mayor LaChapelle, if you'd like to expand on that?
Thank you, Councilor Peak. So we had a, Jennifer Galant left for another position. We had some additional salary expense to fill in the interim, and we were lucky enough to bring on some new folks in payroll, as well, an assistant treasurer. And with the changes of salaries, the most exciting, which I think is before you, uh, tonight, is the appointment, my request for appointment of a new treasurer, Jessica Hurler, uh, who is waving to you right now. And you'll find out about her at the appointments on the committee. So we're just adjusting the salaries.
And the Finance Committee, uh, voted on this three to zero.
Any councilor have any questions? Anyone from the public have any comment or questions about these appropriations? Seeing none, Councilor Peak?
All right. Request is hereby made, uh, for approval of the following appropriation to cover the salary costs of the treasurer positions. Amount requested, $25,000. To be transferred from free cash, $25,000. To be transferred to treasurer assistant salary, $10,000. Treasurer professional services, $15,000. Does it just 10,000, $15,000? I said that right, right? Okay, great. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to cover the salary costs for the buyout of the previous assistant treasurer and professional services for onboarding new treasurer.
Second. We have a motion and a second for supplemental appropriation of $25,000 for the treasurer personal services, outgoing and incoming salary cost. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak?
Great. So I'm going to try and explain the next four all at once because they're basically the same thing, and then we'll just go through them one at a time. And if anyone from the city needs to correct me on any of this, I, like, feel free to do so, but I'm pretty sure I have this right. So the, uh, we have, uh, accounts for, uh, injured-on-duty medical expenses for the police and fire. Every year, uh, we pay those out for compensation, you know, when people are injured, and then our insurance company ultimately pays us back for those claims. But they don't pay it back into the injured-on-duty medical expense accounts for those fiscal years. They pay them back, uh, to the general fund. So these are funds that we either have, depending on, you know, the exact case, we either have been or will be reimbursed for. But just due to, you know, stuff happening, uh, over the last couple of years, you know, in both the fire and police in both fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22, those accounts ran a little bit over. So what is being requested is that we transfer some money from free cash to make those accounts whole, and then money from the general fund will, or like, the, the reimbursements will come to the general fund. So from the point of view of the whole city ledger, it's all kind of a wash, but just accounting-wise, we, we sort of need to do this. Does that make sense? Did I get that? Good, okay, great. Uh, okay, uh, super. So, uh, yeah.
Any councilor have any questions? Anyone from the public have any comment or questions? Seeing none, Tom Peak?
All right. Uh, request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, $679 to be transferred from free cash, $679 to be transferred to the injured-on-duty fire medical expense, $679. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, cover remaining fire injured-on-duty medical expenses for FY21, billing incurred after fiscal year closing.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $679 for the fiscal year 2021, fire injury and duty medical expenses. Any further discussion? Me. I just want to say that I, that I'm in favor of the next four appropriations, but because I sign it as acting mayor, I'm going to abstain. It's not because I'm not in favor of it, it's just because I signed it as acting mayor.
Fair enough.
Barbara?
Uh, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Seeing?
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak?
Uh, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $2,212 to be transferred from free cash, $2,212 to be transferred to the injured-on-duty police medical expense, The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, cover remaining police injured-on-duty medical expenses from FY21, billing incurred after fiscal year closing.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $2,212 for the fiscal year 2021, police injury and duty medical expenses. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Seeing?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak?
Uh, the request is hereby made, uh, for the following appropriation. Amount requested, $12,720 to be transferred from free cash, $12,720 to be transferred to injured-on-duty fire medical expense, $12,720. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, cover fire injured-on-duty medical expenses for the remainder of FY22.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $12,720 for the fiscal year 2022, fire injury and duty medical expenses. Any further discussion?
Oh, one thing.
Councilor Peak?
I also forgot to say that for these two, these include like the expenses we've incurred and a little bit of cushion that should cover us for the remainder of the fiscal year. I forgot to mention that in the presentation.
Any other councilor? Seeing none, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Seeing?
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Motion passes, Councilor Peak?
Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, to be transferred from free cash, $8,685 to be transferred to injured-on-duty police medical expense, $8,685. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, cover police injured-on-duty medical expenses for the remainder of FY22.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $8,685 for the fiscal year 2022, police injury and duty medical expenses. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Seeing?
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Councilor Peak. Councilor Derby?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So what we have is, um, something that's come out of, uh, the housing report, uh, that Councilor Peak brought forward, that was started initially in the city, I believe it was 2009. Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, when we created a smart growth overlay district. And what basically that does is it allows us to, um, increase the density in certain areas, um, to make it more attractive to building affordable housing. And, uh, so 40R is the, uh, piece of legislation. One of the good pieces about this is the state does have, um, programs to reimburse the city if, um, projects get built in these areas. And I think Jeff can probably elaborate a little bit more on that. And, um, that's my little intro. I'll pass it over to Tom, so he can give a little bit more context.
Been a lot of talking tonight. Yeah, so, uh, the one thing I would add here, and I'm sure Jeff will cover a lot of this in more technical detail, but, uh, when we started this, uh, when we brought this item into the ordinance committee, uh, it was sort of narrowly defined to be really talking about, uh, making sure that all of the, uh, old school buildings were smart-zoned and then making a few tweaks, uh, to our, uh, smart-growth zoning in order to make sure that, for instance, it could be possible to do a 100% affordable, uh, project if somebody wanted to do that in one of the schools previously. Everything that we, it had to be mixed-use. And we also wanted to allow for those density bonuses for some small projects that maybe didn't have the scale to allow for, like a big A, like affordable housing project. And so that was the start of this. Once we got it into committee, um, we heard, uh, some interest from some property owners about, uh, the highway business zone and about making that available for, for smart-growth, uh, zoning. In the process, we had done some research and realized that when, uh, the council had actually approved this in the beginning, that was one of the initial recommendations. And, uh, at the time, somewhere along the process, they backed off from that. But when we looked at it, we kind of liked that idea. But when we looked at it, we kind of liked that idea. So we added on to that, uh, sort of further amending, uh, the map. And then, uh, you know, so there was, I guess the point is that there was like, oh, the other thing that was involved is we, um, we at the same time, uh, I mean, this is sort of separate, but we brought them together at the same time because they're sort of related. Uh, we, we also had a, uh, for, we, we did some stuff for, uh, uh, affordable housing by, uh, sorry, planned unit residential development for affordable housing. So these are like potentially like a parcel that has a mixture of some single family, some multifamily, uh, on it. Uh, and really what we were doing is just applying the same standards here in terms of affordable housing incentives that we approved for strictly multifamily, uh, units, uh, in our last term. Uh, that was one of the things that we brought forward. So this is very similar, but just for, you know, like, one of the things that people brought up was, well, what if somebody wanted to do like a village of small, you know, tiny home type things that are affordable? This is the zoning that would theoretically be used to do that. So then that, that's the third item. So it's three things. They're all kind of related. But I just wanted to give some context of how that all unfolded and how that one item sort of became this sort of large, uh, public hearing.
Thank you. But bring it back. I say planner, you see?
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Jeff, I'm the city planner. I'm setting a timer, so I'm going to try to, um, just fill in a couple of pieces of information. I thought both of those introductions were good and very useful and to set the context. And I'm going to use the technology in the room, which our wonderful IT director showed behind the do. So we should be looking at, uh, a, a PowerPoint entitled the Smart Growth Overlay District and the Planning Unit, uh, Planned Unit for Affordable Housing Amendment. So I'll try to be brief, but I do think it's worth touching on some of the, the points again, just to reiterate for members of the public. So there are three elements before the council tonight. Uh, the first is really a new sub-district on North Hampton Street, and it does include 21 properties, and I'll show a map of that. Um, its expansion of the existing sub-district, it's really over Pepin Elementary School. Um, when the district was originally created in 2009, for some reason, that was the one property that didn't have it, have the overlay over it. Uh, and then the changes to the Planned Unit for Affordable Housing section, uh, all have the same general goal, uh, which is to reduce barriers to the construction of affordable housing. And it also implements a bunch of our more recent planning studies. So the Housing Production Plan, which was 2021, the 2020 Downtown Strategic Plan, and our 2008 Master Plan, as well as there's a Greater Springfield Regional Housing Report, um, from this, from this year, that really highlights the importance of trying to do these things. So quickly, what is 40R? Um, it's a program from the Department of Housing and Community Development. So it encourages communities to create dense residential or mixed-use, um, zoning districts. And I did want to just point out that this is a zoning district. I think I covered this somewhere else, but it's optional for a property owner to, to utilize this. It's not a project. So we don't have site plans. We don't have information. This is just to offer the opportunity to do this. The second bullet is that, um, you know, the projects must be developable, developable under the community's, uh, zoning, um, and it's as of right or through a limited site plan review. So that's different than a special permit, and that's one of the incentives that we're trying to offer. Once it's reviewed and approved at the local level, um, communities become eligible for the 40R payments. I think Council Derby mentioned that. So in the, we do get an incentive payment for adopting this. And then if units get built, we do get additional reimbursement payments for that. And that's, the idea is to, to continue to work, um, with people to develop these units because it's not always easy. It's really just, and the last bullet is to substantially increase the, the supply of housing and decrease its costs. Um, the discussions have been going on since July 2021. Um, the process has, has involved four joint public hearings with the Planning Board and Ordinance Subcommittee and includes a multiple-phase review with the DHCD. Um, there was extensive data, so it's, it's all available on the city's webpage, and I do actually preview that. So there was extensive data gathering and mapping that was done to, to build this out and to come up to these conclusions. Um, we did receive the letter of eligibility from DHCD on April 6th. So it does ask for us to still submit a proof of adoption from City Council. If there are any changes, they would, they, they need to see them, um, especially if they're substantial. And then we are, you know, setting forth this criteria that is in our zoning ordinance. So if we do make future changes to the section, we do need to have DHCD review and approve them. Um, and the incentive payment initially to the city is 250,000. Um, and it builds upon our existing 40R district, which was approved in 2009, which gave us a payment of 350,000 back then. Um, and we've had some units built, but, um, I guess we would argue not enough. Um, this is just a quick example of a spreadsheet. It's one of many of the pieces of information that's been, um, reviewed by all the parties, and it's, it's available on the website. Um, this is the map, uh, one of the maps for the Highway Business District. And I think the key, um, benchmarks or borders of it are, um, right around Groveland Street. So, and then it extends to basically Highland Ave. And I think the important part for us to understand is what we have outlined is properties, only properties that were already in the Highway Business zoning district. So we didn't make any other changes to the base zoning. Um, in the middle of this, there was a question about a property on Groveland changing that to Highway Business, and that did, that was withdrawn. So just to be clear that we're only overlaying this over properties that are already zoned in the Highway Business. And then the green and the orange is just, um, to distinguish land that's already developed at some level versus the green, which is, which is developable. And so DHCD calculates things a little bit differently. Um, I know it's hard to see, but we have, um, probably 22.3 documents, you know. We've really loaded all the information, um, onto the public, uh, onto the city's website. So it's all there for anyone who's interested or wants to review. The main elements of the Highway Corridor Mixed Use is, again, that it's optional. But it does allow for greater residential density if, if a development is providing 25% of its units as affordable. Um, it allows the creation of ground floor units, um, with a compatibility finding from the Planning Board. So that applies in the Highway Business Zone and the Downtown Zone. And so that was really important for the schools. For example, if, if there is a future development of the schools, it doesn't make sense for the ground floor to be forced to be commercial. So it allows it to potentially be, um, residential. It doesn't, it, it, it applies the requirement, uh, for 25% of the units to be affordable only if you're developing five or more. Um, there was a lot of discussion about this. Well, there was some discussion about this in that a small project, um, it can be very difficult to meet the DHCD guidelines and incorporate the permanently affordable units, and it, and, and it would actually be a barrier to small projects, which we want as well. So this requirement starts at five units or more. It updates some of the, of the marketing and eligibility requirements to current DHCD standards. And I am noting, um, that there is one item that needs amendment, um, tonight. In the packet, um, Table 7 dash 3, um, should contain a maximum height of 45 feet and a maximum number of stories at 3.5. Um, so hopefully we can make this kind of a judgment, uh, adjustment. Um, it's relative to the Highway Business District. And what it's intended to do is just keep those exist, those are the existing height and story requirements for developments in the Highway Business, and we wanted to mirror them. But in two places, the height went up to five stories. And so that would be my request to figure out how to do that. Buffer standards under Table 7 were added after the Planning Board vote, but are clarifications of items discussed. So basically, the Planning Board and Ordinance agreed to add a Section 6.5. DHCD wanted us to enumerate the exact provisions, which is now in this current copy. We are reducing parking requirements, um, from, um, what's existing now is one space per bedroom. And the, the new requirement will be one space per unit. And that's really in line with what the state is, um, setting out for expectations to lower the parking requirements. Um, the creation of parking is a big challenge and a hurdle to get some of these developments built. Um, design standards are included. They're not technically in the zoning ordinance, but we're just going through the same process with those. Ultimately, this is what the zoning map will look like. The purple is the Highway Business, and the, the black outline is where we're putting the, um, the, the smart growth overlay. And then, um, this is going to just a crude draft of the, of the boundary change, um, to cover the Pepin School. And then just briefly on the other section, the, so we're, we would move out of the smart growth section of the zoning, and we're amending another section, the Planned Unit Residential Development. Um, the major change is to allow a project to come forward as plan approval rather than special permit. And that is, uh, the, it's one of the, one of the only incentives that the city can provide right now is to make the permit process a little more predictable, uh, for developers. So that's something that the city has done a couple of times. And it adds the ability to use the, this development method in the downtown business, the Highway Business, in the Mill Industrial District, um, where it was not previously available to, to look at. So I think those were the, those were the, um, additional highlights I wanted to add. And I'll, um, stop sharing my screen and answer any questions.
Thank you. Any councilor have any questions to plan it back?
JP does.
Uh, Councilor Kozinski?
Uh, thank you. You had mentioned, Jeff, buffer provisions, and I presume it's the buffer provisions between the Highway Business District and the residential districts, uh, joining. And could you just highlight for us what those buffer provisions are? And any changes from existing conditions with buffer provisions since we're increasing the density of the units, how that all fits together?
Yes, thanks. I'm happy to do that. I am thumbing through my printed copy here. If you're following along in the packet, it's on, um, a page that's numbered 7 dash 16, and it's, um, Table 7.5. It relates to the Highway Corridor Business District, and I think as Council Kozinski mentioned, um, this came up during discussion, that there are places in the Highway Business District where it ends, and there's a residential district abutting it. And through the discussions, everyone was on board with considering that as a, as an important thing. Um, so where the Highway Business District abuts a residential district, um, the provisions of 6.5 shall apply. So we have an existing section, and DHCD just wanted us to enumerate what they were. So it's that there is a strip of land at least 25 feet in width that will contain a screen of plantings in the center strip, and it has some specifics, so not less than three feet in width and six feet in height at occupancy. Um, and if there's a large lot with 175 feet or more frontage, that strip of vegetation will be 35 feet. Individual shrubs shall be planted, not more than three feet on center, and shall be thereafter maintained. Um, and at least 50% shall be evergreens. It, Section C, which is here, allows, um, a solid wall or fence, not to exceed six feet. Complimented by suitable plantings may be substituted. Um, and that would be something that the Planning Board would look at. And then, um, the last item is where the HB District abuts a residential district. No buildings within the HB District shall be within 25 feet of the boundary. So those are all existing sections that were sort of baked into this and, and written in.
Thank you. Councilor Zaret?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Okay, address the planner directly. Uh, just a quick kind of clarification, or just for the sake of the public, around some of the design standards. Uh, this, this spills over from last term. I, I had had some questions about, um, some of the more sustainable, ecologically friendly, green, uh, standards. And just to clarify, there's a lot of admittedly good standards in there, but they're, they're more so recommendations and guidelines and strict, strict requirements in terms of things like plantings and bioswells and such, right? And they're, they're pretty vigorous, and they, we encourage, the language encourages, um, developers to do these things, but they're not required, correct?
That is correct. So they are intended to be a guide that is available for developers as they begin a project. Um, through the process, we did find that DHCD isn't in, is either in the process or has recently completed their review of what they want to see in, uh, in a, in a project that is permanently affordable, and they are raising the standard as well. So between the encouraged design standards and what DHCD is expecting of a development like this, we will be seeing more and more, um, more sustainable plantings and more, just general sustainable principle practices. So things like solar, um, things like low-impact development, so that's rain gardens. Those are, we're moving towards those being expected, but the design standards are currently recommendations. So.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Anyone from the public have any question or comment? Just, just go to the podium and state your name and address and make the question or comment.
Hi, my name is Jessica Allen, um, real estate project manager at Valley CDC. Um, one of the many things that we do at Valley CDC is we're affordable housing developers. And so I just wanted to come tonight and speak in favor of the, the proposed changes and just to give some, um, developer perspective of how this is beneficial, uh, to us as we're, as we're moving forward. So as you may know, uh, Valley has a CPA grant, uh, through the, through the city to do a housing pre-development assessment. So we're actively looking for sites. We're actively vetting sites. Um, and so we're very much looking to see how the zoning works in favor of certain parcels that we're, that we're vetting. As, I just want to reiterate what Jeff noted in terms of how the city can best support affordable housing is through permitting path, providing an, an easy, efficient, clear permitting path for developers as we move forward, trying to, to develop these units, um, and in the zoning itself. So not all communities are very favorable to affordable housing, and so they tend to make it as difficult as possible. When we find ourselves in a situation where we have to utilize comprehensive permit 40B, which is another form of, of developing affordable housing that can add at least another year to a, to a development schedule. So having clear 40R language is hugely beneficial to the developer as we're, as we're actively, uh, vetting sites. Um, I want to just note one other, uh, amendment that we are very happy to see in the last draft, which is in the Downtown District, changing the requirements on ground floor development. Um, the current version, the one that's on the books right now prohibits ground floor development. When we're developing and when we're looking, we need to make sure, if we're going to go for public subsidies through DHCD, if we're going to go for, uh, low-income housing tax credits, we need to be able to have a minimum of 20 units in order to be eligible. So having a, an existing building, such as a school, that, um, being able to develop that ground floor is hugely important. Um, it'd be very difficult to make the numbers work and to be able to be applicable for subsidies if we aren't able to develop those ground floors. So from our perspective, we're thrilled to see that that language still remains in the current, um, in the, in the version. Um, I do want to note, in the last version that I looked at online today, I'm not sure is the most current version, but, um, if you're talking amendments, there is in the monitoring agents, definition is referencing HAP still. I'm not sure if that's in the, the last version. I think Jeff should check. But HAP is an agency that no longer exists, and they are now wayfinders, and they do not provide, um, monitoring services for municipalities. So I know that when I attended the Planning Board meetings, the language was revised in the body of the zoning. I'm not sure if it just made it into the definition. So if you have to entertain an amendment anyway, I would suggest that that gets added in there. I do want to just note the green standards that, that, um, Councilor Zaret brought up and just reiterate that DHCD holds us to extremely high standards for energy efficiency, for green development, for native plantings. We are required to have all of these in order to be eligible for funding. They are above and beyond what any market rate private developer has to do, way above and beyond. That adds additional costs, which makes it expensive to build affordable housing. But we are happy and willing to do it because it's the right thing to do, and we know it's the right thing to do. So I just wanted to make note of that. Um, and I just want to thank you for taking this on and, and thank Councilor Peak for, for addressing this in the Planning Department. This is going to make it a heck of a lot easier for affordable housing developers to come in and to develop in East Hampton. So thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Anyone else from here want to say, make a, you know, I just want to let this one first. You go to the podium and please state your name and address.
Fran Root again, Hendrick Street. Uh, I just have quick questions for Jeff. I support you all the way on this. But has any, uh, thought been given to any charges of, uh, spot zoning allocations with regards to this?
Okay, to address the question, I think that's a great question. No, generally speaking, we're, we're not concerned with that. It's not really spot zoning when we take into consideration the size and scale of the number of properties. Not all will choose to use it, but all will have it available. So generally speaking, the, the case law, generally speaking, for spot zoning is a single, if, if a single property owner were to benefit from a zoning change, your concern with spot zoning is there, but, um, of this size and scale and the discussion and the overall goals and purposes, it's not, uh, concerning. And just to address, just to be proactive and address the Pepin School, we're taking, like, and the map was just a partial map, so the whole... the Pepin School, we're taking, and the map was just a partial map. So the whole, there's a large smart growth district in that whole area and we're just pushing it one property further. So it's just expanding what is a larger district. So we're, we're not concerned with the question about spot zoning. And then Ms. Allen raised a great observation, the definition of monitoring agent, which is on page seven dash two, probably was a, it just didn't get caught. All the other references in the section for marketing have been highlighted, reviewed by us and by DHCD. So somehow this slipped through the cracks, but really it would read, "Any qualified housing entity designated by the PAA to review and implement affordable requirements affecting projects under seven point four six." There are numerous ways where the marketing plan and any other similar monitoring program has to go to DHCD anyway. So it would really just be striking out the regional housing partnership HAP or, so it's really just striking out some language at the beginning of that.
Kim?
Hello, my name is Kaiam Jeremy-Ron McLeod. I live in Creasing Two and I love this community, which is why I'm here to speak in support of the efforts to increase the availability of housing in our city. Full disclosure, I'm speaking both as a resident and as a member of the East Hampton Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. First though, I'll be speaking as a lifelong resident and as a young person looking at the options open to my generation for building a future. Housing is a huge part of this picture. I currently rent an apartment in town and while there are definitely great things about it, there are a lot of issues. The building is old, drafty, expensive to eat, and has a leaky roof, among other things. But this is, uh, this is just one of few, if not the only options I have if I want to stay in East Hampton. And I know I'm not alone in the struggle. If you take a look around on any real estate listings, you can see the lack of options right now. As of this morning on Zillow, I can count the listings on one hand. If I was looking for something affordable for someone living paycheck to paycheck, I'd be completely out of luck. And this is not ideal, especially if you consider that many of these people are like me, younger residents that love it here, want to be able to stay and want to help contribute and build the community they love, but are being priced out and pushed out by high prices and subpar housing quality. It's clear to me that East Hampton needs housing to support and grow our population of young artists and professionals, as well as provide for our aging population that face the challenges of rising costs on a fixed income. Housing is also a huge step to support the creation of new small businesses that contribute to our economic growth and resiliency by creating employment opportunities and local production capacity. Speaking as a member of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, I'm happy to report that the city has rightfully acknowledged this need and approved a plan to help make that happen, as we just heard from City Planner Bag. The twenty twenty-one to twenty-sixth, uh, housing production plan clearly outlines the growing need for affordable and attainable housing and provides a number of recommendations to help achieve the goals laid out by the city, as well as the statewide goals for increasing affordable housing production. The proposed zoning amendments take the next steps in the right direction for more housing in East Hampton and I implore anyone who wants to see our community thrive, support these current and future efforts to create more housing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else.
Okay, so we have three separate motions here. And in the first motion, there will be an amendment. So I'll make the motion, get a second, and then we'll make the amendment. So the first motion is to amend existing zoning ordinance, table five dash one, section seven dot four, smart growth overlay district, including parking and design standards and the creation of a new highway corridor mixed-use forty R sub-district over twenty-one properties on North Hampton Street. Those parcels include one twenty-eight dash one thirteen, one twenty-eight dash one fourteen, one twenty-eight dash one twelve, one twenty-eight dash one eleven, one twenty-eight dash one ten, one twenty-eight dash one oh seven point one, one twenty-eight dash one oh nine, one twenty-eight dash one oh eight, one twenty-eight dash one oh seven, one twenty-eight dash one oh five, one twenty-eight dash ninety-six, one twenty-eight dash ninety-five, one twenty-eight dash ninety-four, one twenty-eight dash ninety-three point one, one twenty-eight dash ninety-two, one twenty-eight dash ninety-one, one twenty-eight dash ninety, one twenty-eight dash eighty-nine, one twenty-eight dash forty-five, one twenty-eight dash forty-four, and one twenty-eight dash forty-three.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the zoning ordinance amendment, forty R smart growth, amend existing zoning ordinance table five dash one and section seven point four smart growth overlay district. Any further discussion?
Do you want to do it, Tom?
I have it written down.
If you've got it written down, then you should do it. I'd like to make an amendment to the seconded motion to amend table dash seven point three, maximum height to amend to forty-five feet and a max, maximum of three point five stories.
We have a motion and a second to amend the original motion. Any further discussion about the amendment? Seeing on Barbara?
I just, I just, can you just clarify that? You want to, can you just read that again?
Yes.
Sorry.
To amend table dash seven point three, maximum height to forty-five feet and a maximum of three and a half stories.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez? JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any other for the discussion about the Council Peak?
We also have to do the monitoring agent thing, so.
You want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to amend, I'm sorry, which I don't have it in front of me.
Seven point two definitions, any qualifying housing agency. Some other stuff and then strike out.
That will be good.
Yeah, it's to strike out the regional housing partnership HAP or other. So it's really the, the sentence that needs to be struck.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the original motion. Any further discussion about the amendment? Seeing on Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the next one is for the two zoning map amendments. And this would be a motion to amend the official zoning map by extending the downtown mixed-use sub-district over Pepin Elementary School at Fort Park Street, parcel fifty-two dash eighty-two, and to create a new highway corridor forty R sub-district over the listed properties.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the zoning ordinance amendment to zoning map amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. And the final one is for the affordable housing from plan approval to, or from special permit to plan approval. And this is a motion to amend section eight point six planned unit for residential development and for affordable housing by plan approval rather than special permit in the R five, R ten, R fifteen zoning districts and to allow it by plan approval in the downtown business, highway business, neighborhood business and mill industrial districts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to the zoning ordinance amendment about affordable housing. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Communication for elected officials boards and committee. Any councilor have anything, Council Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been working, volunteering some of my time in a non-council capacity with some residents of the East Hampton Housing Authority properties. They are trying to form an LTO, that's a local tenants organization, and they're going to be having an election to elect officers to that LTO board. They don't have a date locked down yet, but it looks like it's going to be sometime in the middle of June. For that election to take place, they're going to have multiple locations at their properties and likely a location at City Hall for those properties that don't include a community room. And there needs to be third-party people who are not residents, but who have some experience with elections and whatnot to oversee those. So I reached out and all the parties are, find it acceptable if city councilors want to do that. So if any councilors would want to spend a Saturday sometime in mid-June, basically sitting by a ballot box and making sure nobody votes twice or whatever, you know, I'm sure Barb has a lot of tips on how to do it well. But like, you know, I think there's probably going to be four locations, you know, one at Cliffview, one at Sunrise, one at Dickinson and one here. It'll probably be Saturday, nine to five, something like that. They're just working on nailing down a formal date, but we're close. I think this is a really great thing that will allow our public housing tenants here in East Hampton to be organized and, and advocate for themselves in a, in a more organized way. So it's something I'm very excited about and I hope I can get some volunteers on this committee to help, uh, help staff that election.
Council Peak, can you please send us the invitation through Google Calendar? So that way we can have it and add it to our agenda so that way we can help with the election.
Yeah, absolutely. I think tentatively they'll be voting on a date this coming Tuesday. So I'll let you know as soon as I know, but we discussed it last night. I just figured I should make people aware it's coming up.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Council Zerat?
Uh, just a couple, couple quick announcements. Just again, last, last, last time, City Cleanup Day is May fifteenth from nine to one. I'll send out, there's a sign up sheet. If any councilors have recommendations for specific areas that aren't on the sign up or they want to sponsor some constituents or friends, please let me know. We can add that. Everyone saw that the Ukrainian flag is flying over City Hall. There's some efforts within the city to organize the definitive opportunities for donations, as well as specifically items for first aid. So there's discussions about that and there will be a fundraiser at the Miracle Theater on May, uh, sorry, it's a lot, it's not council, it's May twenty-fifth. So I'll have more information about that at the next meeting. And then apropos of, of, I think the resolution that's coming up for Arbor Day, just want folks avail, aware of what's called no mow May for, to try to avoid mowing your lawn or areas of your lawn to foster more natural meadow growth. And even better, if you can take those areas and plant native plantings to try to encourage increase in our natural pollinators because there's a significant decrease in, in pollinator biomass. So we need to do everything we can, including native plantings and also reducing your mowing reduces your carbon emissions. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a piece of new business that we are, have been asked to, to act on tonight. And it is the CPA Emergency Rental Assistant Program Modification Request. And I believe Jamie Webb is here to talk about that.
Thank you. I'm Jamie Webb, Assistant Planner and CPA Administrator. I'm coming to you tonight to ask you to make a small change to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. As you all, I think, are aware, it was funded with three hundred thousand dollars from the CPA in mid-two thousand twenty to help people in East Hampton, East Hampton residents who are having difficulty paying their rent due to the pandemic. To date, we have spent, we've, we've provided assistance to sixty-two households and spent about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that appropriation. We have about sixty-two thousand dollars left. And our contract with Community Action of the Pioneer Valley ends on June thirtieth. They have received a couple of requests for, from, from clients who have already received a maximum three thousand dollar award. And for reasons relating to their personal circumstances, Valley, sorry, Community Action has requested that we amend the program to increase the maximum amount to six thousand dollars per household. The additional three thousand dollars would only be available for people who are either currently owe back rent or have a documented inability to pay their rent going forward. The original three thousand dollars was allowed to go for future rent payments. You just have to qualify based on income. Part of the impetus for this request is that on April fifteenth, the state announced that the federal funding for the emergency rental assist, one, two of their emergency rental assistance programs had dried up and so they had no more funds. So we're looking at this as a way to help East Hampton residents who would have been eligible under that state program to maybe get a little bit more rental assistance to stay in their houses. They still have to have, they still have to be income qualified. They still have to have a pandemic-related adverse impact. And we're looking to get your approval on this tonight because like I said, the contract with Community Action ends on June thirtieth and we only have two more months left to administer the program.
Thank you. Before taking any actions, I just want to ask the councilor, if anyone have any objections of voting for this tonight? Or everybody is okay with it? Yeah, okay. Anyone have any question to Jamie? Seeing on, Council Derby?
Would you like me to read the summary of the changes before I make the motion?
Yes, please.
So the summary of the changes are, would be to extend the program to June thirtieth. No change to guidelines for the first three thousand dollars for new clients. An additional three thousand dollars would be allowed only to those clients who previously received their first three thousand and who owe rent in areas and have documented temporary inability to pay rent going forward, oh, in rears. Community Action will not ask for additional administrative funds and will continue to work until June thirtieth once administrative fee already appropriated runs out. So the motion would be that the city council approve the new program guidelines to the rent relief program as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and the Planning Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CPA Emergency Rental Assistant Program Modification Request. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other councilor have any communication? Seeing on, mayor communication, Madam Mayor? You know, have any communication? Correspondent announcement for the President or Vice President? Yes, we do have something. I'm going to write, going to read something. The city of East Hampton to mark Arbor Day by offering resident-free tree seedling, councilors, in honor, in honor of Arbor Day and as a way to grow East Hampton tree canopy, the city of East Hampton would distribute free trees seedling on Saturday, May sevens to interest residents for plant, planting in their yards. From nine to twelve, in the parking area, East Hampton Municipal Building at Fifty-Pace Avenue, city volunteers will offer over three hundred tree seedling and instruction for planting them. We have a resolution from the council president and the vice president, the, Mr. Vice President is going to be there now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource that give us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, whereas the City of East Hampton commits to upholding the Commonwealth standards for public shade trees as defined by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87. Therefore, we, the East Hampton City Council, do hereby recognize Arbor Day in the City of East Hampton, and we will urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees and gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you. Now we're going to move for a report and of standing committees. Finance, Consulor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week. We didn't discuss any of the things that are currently on the agenda, other than the supplemental appropriations that we voted on. Oh, well, there's still the, yeah, the CPA funds we haven't touched, but we're going to be meeting again next week to discuss a bunch of stuff, which I'm going to read into, yeah, at the end. And I guess that-
The meeting is going to be?
Yeah, the meeting is going to be on, well, the 11th at 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00?
Mm-hmm. Or, wait, 5:00 p.m., probably.
5:00 p.m.
Usually 5:00, yeah.
And it's going to be here at 50 Basin, right?
I believe so.
Yep.
You know.
Thank you, Consulor Peak. Police safety, Consulor Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last night in person. It was nice to see everyone's faces in person. Last night, a couple of things. Quarterly review with the DPW. Director Nudelman came and spoke with us. I'll just give the council some of the highlights. I encouraged them to watch the meeting. It was probably a little bit over an hour. This was Director Nudelman's first quarterly report, so it was a little longer. They'll subsequently be shorter. He basically, he gave us some general overview of the department and the sub-departments within DPW and their roles. In no specific order, some of the highlights, we talked about some of the infrastructure upgrades on Holyoke Street, particularly the crosswalks at East Green Street and Allen Street. And both of those are scheduled to happen. East Green Street in particular, there's some sidewalk complications. They're just trying to figure out with a private landowner how to make that work. The streetlights, which I know, so Eversource basically gave us $250,000 worth of streetlights. I know that the council is aware of that. The ones that are too bright or not bright enough or need some sort of mitigation, those should be addressed within the next month. There's another contractor that Director Nudelman has spoken to. Prior to that, there were some supply chain issues. So hopefully by the end of May, any lights that have been issues that have already been reported, those should be dealt with. Two items in the fleet, the Street Sweeper and what's called Truck 33, which is a dump truck that also has a catch basin cleanout, those he noted as both in dire need of replacement. The Glendale Bridge also, that's potentially an infrastructure issue, over $2 million that probably has maybe a good seven to eight years left, but needs funding to fix, as well as just some other general infrastructure needs. Just to be clear, too, our Chapter 90 funding is, I believe, if I get this number right, it's right around half a million dollars. And just for the council and the public to know, for instance, projects like the one they just did repaving Main Street, that's a million dollars. So we're constantly kind of catching up with our Chapter 90 funding. We had some general discussions about water and sewer as well. There's, as we know, constant need there for upgrades of infrastructure pump stations, et cetera, sewage treatment plants. So that's kind of the overview, but I would encourage people to look at more. We also, since the last meeting, had the presentation on the Narcan Boxes. So there are boxes that are sponsored through the help of Hampshire Hope that have now been installed in City Hall, Mountain View High School, and the high school, as well as the library. This will be part of an expanding program through cooperation with the Health Department, Police and Fire, and Hampshire Hope supplying the boxes. We're looking at options, or they are looking at options for outdoor boxes, but that becomes complicated because you need a power source and it has to be climate-controlled. But there's going to be discussion about expanding these to availability, and this was certainly a significant lifesaving measure for individuals who are addicted to opioids as well as might otherwise have fatal events from opioid use. Definitely a big thanks to the Health Department, Police, Fire on that. We discussed the speed signs. We have already reviewed them with the Police Department. There was consensus there that this is something that would benefit the city. We presented it last night to Director Nudelman. He also agrees that these would be helpful, as well as discussing in the future some other speed mitigation tactics. We also reviewed briefly some information we received from a vendor, so I think we're going to try to synthesize this now at our next meeting and kind of discuss strategic areas that these could be employed in. And then the Main and South Light, we got some general information from Director Nudelman. This project would probably cost anywhere from, I'd say, $800,000 to $1.2 million, depending, or $1.5 million, depending on the scope of the project, whether we maintain just the current lanes that exist there and just put a light in, if we wanted to put turning lanes in, and other things like that. So, you know, it's complicated. There's a lot of other infrastructure needs, specifically the Glendale Bridge. He said specifically that their traffic counts are too low currently, and that needs to be reevaluated probably in the fall when we have more flow to the schools. Our next scheduled meeting is, will be, our next quarterly review, this will be with the Fire Department, that's the first Tuesday in June, which is June 7th at 6:00 p.m. I believe it will probably be in Conference Room 1. That will be with the Fire Department. And at this time, regarding the discussion or presentation of Narcan Boxes in the city, I'd like to make a motion to remove that without prejudice.
Second. We have a motion to seconds to remove without prejudice the discussion on Narcan Boxes. Any further discussion? None, Barbara? I'm sorry, Consulor Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, that's really the only mechanism to remove this item from the agenda. This will probably be brought back maybe in six months to reevaluate the program and how it's working. So I just want to clarify why it's being removed.
Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
This concludes.
I think we have two items we have to extend. We have two of them.
Yes, the review of Main and South and-
And the electric monitors.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, for your keen eye. At this time, I'd like to request a 90-day extension on both the review of South and Main Street four-way traffic light, as well as the review of the use of electric speed monitoring signs. That's in the form of a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to extend this two items for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes, Consulor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll get some housekeeping out of the way first. I'd like to request a 90-day extension on the vacant storefront ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second to extend the vacant storefront ordinance for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yep.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes, Consulor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So unfortunately, we had a death in the family, so we had to cancel our last meeting, which accounts for me not being at our last meeting, because I was in Cleveland. But we do have a new meeting scheduled for next Monday, the 9th, at 6:00 p.m. in Conference Room 1. And we are going to discuss the vacant storefront ordinance. We'll probably do a little bit of some review on the Ordinance Review Committee's report, but we're also going to discuss, at the end of the meeting, we're going to discuss the new business item that we have, which has not been introduced yet. This concludes.
Thank you, Consul Derby. We don't have anything in property, we don't have anything in rules in government, nothing in old business or new business, Consul Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have a request to amend city ordinances by adding section 6-22, deceptive advertising practices of limited pregnancy centers. I would like to move that to ordinance, form of motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to amend the city ordinance, adding section 622, sending to their ordinance committee. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Consulor Sarret?
Just erroneously, that should be read as 6-23. So for the, no, that's how it's listed in the new business, Consulor. But for the purpose of the agenda, I'd request that it be properly listed as 623.
That will be okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's perfect. Barbara?
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes, Consulor Derby.
I would like to move the following mayoral appointments, five of them, to the Appointments Subcommittee. Sarah Carr to the Conservation Committee with a term expiring 12/31/23. Hal Weeks to the Conservation Committee with a term expiring 12/31/24. Bonnie McLeod to the National Wildlife Pond Committee, term expiring 12/31/22. Anthony Monk to the Veterans Council, term expiring 12/31/24. Jessica Hebert, City Treasurer, with a term expiring 5/1/25. In form of a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to send those five mayoral appointments to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes, Consulor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. And at this time, I will send it over to our acting Finance Chair, Consulor Peak, who hasn't talked enough tonight, so here we go.
So just making sure I understand this correctly, I can make a motion to send all of these to Finance, and then a second motion to set a public hearing for all of these. We don't have to have like 11 different, okay, this is one motion. So I'm going to make a motion to send a bunch of things to Finance and set a public hearing for them for-
May 18.
May 18th at 6:15.
So you do a first reading, and then you make the motion.
Okay, so I'm doing the first reading. So the first one is an interdepartmental transfer. The request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation amount requested, $1,500 to be transferred from reserve fund, $1,500 to be transferred to City Council Advertising, $1,500. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide additional funding for City Council legal advertising for the rest of the fiscal year. The second is a supplemental appropriation request from the CPA. The request is hereby made for the following appropriation amount requested, $156,130 to be appropriated from CPA Reserve for Affordable Housing, $107,115. CPA Undesignated Fund, $49,015 for total of $156,130 to be appropriated to Valley CDC Housing Sustainability and Financial Literacy, $156,130. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide low and moderate income households with financial literacy education, housing counseling services, and three down payment assistance grants. The next one, request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriations, $89,864 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to account 001.2100.5818.2022, The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to purchase one 2022 Tesla Model Y EV Cruiser for the Traffic Bureau, $56,940. Police conversions and equipment for two Tesla Y EV Cruisers, $24,129. Installations of two police department electric vehicle charging stations, $8,795. Here's the next one, there's a lot of these. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriations. Amount requested, $148,000 to be transferred from free cash, $148,000, to be transferred to EMS overtime, $22,500. Miscellaneous professional and technical services, $10,000. EMS supplies, $22,500. Overtime pay, $45,000. Permanent salaries, $9,500. Sick leave incentive, $16,500. Ambulance vehicle repairs, $7,000. Firefighting equipment, $15,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, EMS overtime, coverage for ambulance recall of personnel, miscellaneous professional and technical services, third-party billing agency costs for EMS revenue collection, EMS supplies, cost of supplies on ambulances, overtime pay, cost for backfill on shifts, permanent salaries, costs for vacation buyouts, retirement, Greg Gagnon, sick time incentive, costs for sick leave buyout, retirement, Greg Gagnon. Ambulance vehicle repairs, cost for exhaust filter on A1 that occurred on 2/1/22. Firefighting equipment, purchase of new gear for two firefighters, and change rank of two others. Here's the next one. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $27,467.23 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to computer salary full times, $14,422.21. Computer salaries, $13,054.2. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes, cover FY22 IT department payroll. The next supplemental appropriation request is hereby made for the following appropriation, $49,800 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $49,800, to be transferred to Liberty Street Pump Station Removal, $49,800. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, design services are necessary to evaluate options for upgrades to the Liberty Street Station. The Department of Public Works requests $49,800 to be transferred to the, from enterprise retained earnings to fund this design work. The next supplemental appropriation request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $15,000 to be transferred from free cash, $15,000, to be transferred to tree, $15,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purposes. This work includes the removal of seven declining or decaying trees and the trimming of an additional eight trees. The Department of Public Works requests $15,000 to be transferred from free cash to fund the completion of this work. There's like four left. Three, okay. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $93,500 to be transferred from free cash, $93,500, to be transferred to snow, snow chemical, $6,500. Salt, $87,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The Department of Public Works has experienced a shortfall of $93,500 in the snow and ice removal budget for FY22. We are requesting funds to be transferred from free cash to cover this def- We are requesting funds to be transferred from Free Cash to cover this deficiency. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $40,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, $40,000. To be transferred to Fuel, $40,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: Due to the circumstances outside of our control, fuel prices have increased dramatically in FY22. As such, we are requesting $40,000 to be transferred from Free Cash to cover this shortfall. And finally, request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested, $4,000 to be transferred from Free Cash, $4,000. To be transferred to Trash, Municipal, $2,000. School, $2,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: We are requesting $4,000 to be transferred from Free Cash to cover trash removal and pickup expenses for the remainder of FY22. Madam President, I make these as an emotion and also request that a public hearing be set for two weeks from today at 6:15 PM.
Second to the motions to refer committee and second to the public hearing. By the way, it's Mr.
I am so sorry. But it's all good. I'm sorry.
That's fine. We have a motion and a second to move one interdepartmental transfer and nine supplemental appropriations and to set a public hearing for May 18, May 18 and 15 for those, one transfer and appropriation on May 18. Any further discussion about moving this to the public, to the Finance Committee? Seeing none. Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. It looks like we're done with the agenda. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Everybody have a great night.